And Justice Earl. All right, we shall start with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is to approve February 21, 2023, Homestead County Board Minutes, proclaim Social Worker Month, the YMCA camp's suspension of archery regulations, letter D cost share agreement 2023-001 with the City of Byron, letter E contract award for contract number 2023-105 at the Homestead Waste Energy Facility Boiler Two Tile Conversion, letter F Green Core Worker Application, letter G City of Rochester Abatement Bonds, Homestead County denial to participate, letter H approved gambling permit for Upper Root River Ducks Unlimited, and letter I approved gambling permit for the Lake Zembro Forever.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. See no questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Number four, we're at the point of our informal agenda. Letter A Presentation on the Board of Appeal and Equalization Process. Who has that? All right. Mary and Julie.
Thank you Commissioner Wright and the Commissioners, sorry. Chairperson Wright and the Commissioners. I am Mary with Property Records and Licensing. And alongside of me is Julie Hackman, the County Assessor and Associate Director of Property Records and Licensing. At the end of March, we will be doing a mailing that will include the values for 2024, the assessed values of properties. Inside that mailing will also be the tax statements for 2023. We wanted to get in front of the questions that you may receive in regard to this mailing and the importance of understanding that it's the timing of when to contest the 2024 values. Unfortunately, the public a lot of times feels that it's during the truth in taxation, which is a budget time. So we're going to give this opportunity to ask questions and maybe put some of these thoughts into your head in the event that you get called by a taxpayer. So I'll let Julie start it off.
Thank you. Good morning. So the first slide.
Oh, we have the clicker.
So the Board of Appeal, the County Board of Equalization, has the authority to listen to taxpayers and change values if they believe that our values or the assessment that we place on the property is incorrect. If we start back with the process of mailing notices go out at the end of March, we start with Local Board of Appeal and Equalization in April. And so there's two weeks in April that we have meetings with each of the local jurisdictions, cities and townships to hold individual meetings for taxpayers in their jurisdiction that disagrees with the value or classification placed on their property. There are jurisdictions, I think this year we have 10 of them, that do not hold their own Board of Appeal and Equalization. They will hold open book meetings, which means they have from the time we mail notices out until the County Board of Equalization to contest their values. So some of those properties will come to the County Board for decision making. So if a property owner disagrees with their property market value, they have the right to appeal their value. There's a couple of different options. They can go to a local board. If they want to go to County Board, they have to go to the local board meeting first. If there's an open book meeting, they can go directly to County Board without talking to our office. We much prefer that they talk to our office first and get their questions answered, but they do have the ability to go straight to County Board. Or they can have the ability to go straight to tax court. Again, we hope that they contact our office first. The County Board has the, or the Board of Appeal of Equalization has the authority to change evaluation or a classification on the current year only. So the year that will be heard this year is the January 2, 2023 assessment taxes payable in '24 values. So that is the only value that we can address when we talk at the County Board of Equalization. Any of the decisions made by the Board or any of the Boards need to be supported by facts and by Minnesota law, just to ensure that all taxpayers are being treated equally and uniformly. So this is kind of what we just talked about. In order to make an informed decision on the valuation or classification of property, it's important to understand the concepts of valuation and classification. They are equally important. So on January 2 of every year, our office looks at the classification of a property, which is how a property is used. So if a property is used commercially, it will be classified commercially and taxed commercially. If it's residential, agricultural, apartment, same thing. They can be split classed. So if a property is used both as residential or and commercial, we can have a split classification. So that portion used residentially will pay a residential tax and that portion used commercially will pay a commercial tax. I think I'm getting ahead of you. So a couple of different definitions. Market value is the price that would tend to prevail under a typical, normal, competitive, open market. In the assessor's office, we use estimated market value, which is essentially the same thing. Our estimated market value should be or would be what a property should sell for on an open market. The value is determined on an assessment date as of January 2 of every year. That's what we consider the assessment date. The current EMV is the only year that they can appeal at the Board. And then the taxable market value, you'll hear about that as well. That's listed on the statement. It's the value that taxes are actually based on after all reductions, limitations, exemptions, exclusions, and deferrals. So that would be Homestead exclusion, any veterans exemptions, any of the other egg credits, any of that type of thing that goes into it. So again, on January 2, we apply a statutory defined classification. Currently, I think there's 41 of them within the state. And then there are different combinations that could go up into the hundreds. Examples of it, of the main classifications are residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial, apartment, and seasonal, recreational. And again, back to the split class, it doesn't have to be just one of those classifications. It can be multiple. Doesn't have to be two. If there's three, four, we will classify it based on actually what the use of that portion of the property is. So this is just a flow chart that gives the appellant with the process that they can appeal the assessment. If they collect all the facts, gather recent appraisals or sales of like properties and contact our office. That's step number one. That's usually the conversation we can have with property owners. We can talk them through the current sales. We can talk them through the different aspects of their property. Most times during that conversation, it's more of an educational level that we can give them the information they need to either be satisfied with that answer or in conversation, we gather the information as well to help us determine if the market value we placed on that property is accurate and uniform. Like I said earlier, they can appeal to the township or the city under their Board of Equalization. If they don't have one of those, it's open book and they have up until the County Board to appeal that value. Within the County Board, obviously, there's the steps prior to that. There's a specific time in mid-June that we have to meet after the second Friday and before the end of the month, but it has to be within a 20-day period. They can appeal in person or by letter. And they can call our, it says they can call Assessment Services, but they actually call Administration for the appointment to appear at County Board of Equalization. They can call our office anytime. We work closely with Administration to make sure that anybody who wants to be heard is. The other option is obviously tax court. They can either go to the regular division or to small claims division if they fit the categories for either of those. Typically, the small claims division is more residential property and it's under that $300,000. And as they get that going, one of the biggest things the assessor's office takes a look at is we take a look at our values in relation to the sale prices. So for us, it's considered the sales ratio study. It's a tool that helps us determine our values for the properties in future years. The results, if the results aren't within acceptable guidelines, and acceptable guidelines with the Department of Revenue is considered, our sales need to be between 90 and 105% of the sale price. So we take a look at some of those sales studies. If the median for jurisdictions within that range were considered in compliance, if we're outside of that range, then we have to take a look and decide what we need to do to get those properties within that compliance range. The sales ratio period, this is a lot of information, but the sales ratio period for the 2023 assessment that we'll be talking about at County Board of Equalization, this is the hardest thing for people to understand. It's not like a fee appraiser that would come out and take a look at your house for mortgage purposes, where they're going to look at three comps within the last probably six months to a year and determine what the value is. In an assessor's office, for mass appraisal purposes, we are actually looking at prior sales. So for the January 2, 2023 study that we just closed our assessment on last Friday, the sales that we'll be looking at that determine those values was from October 1 of 2021 and goes till September 30 of 2022. That helps us.
Ms. Chirkett, I just asked, is that by law or by county practice or policy?
It is by law. And the reason for that is because if we take a look at October 1 of 2021 through September 30 of 2022 sales, we use that information to determine January 2 of 2023. And later in the slides, I have the timeline of when notices go out. It actually gives property owners the time to appeal prior to the taxes being due. So if we used current sales, they would literally have to appeal their value and pay in the same year in order to give our office enough time in order to create those values. So in a year where values are increasing at a steady pace, we're always lagging behind because the sales that we're determining in that assessment are from a year and a half ago already. So in a year like this year, we see interest rates increasing and sales starting to slow down a little bit, less sales coming in. Our values are getting closer to what they're selling properties for. And so that's usually when we have the most questions. Is that people are used to that little bit of lag. You know, we're probably on the lower end of that 90%, whereas right now, we're probably getting more 96 to 98% of those values and some of our new values going forward. And so that the comfortable level for taxpayers, that's the calls that we typically get.
Yes.
Mr. Hackman, the assessor only considers sales that have been verified as typical and open market. Would you define those terms for me?
Sure. We have to verify all the sales outside that range or any. So all of our commercial, industrial, apartment, agricultural sales, we verify each one of those. Residential, we verify anything outside of that 90 to 105% range unless we find something that's a little different with that sale. That could be, if it's a relative sale, we don't consider it as part of a good sale within our studies. So we don't use that to help us determine values. It could also be one corporate entity to another. Or it could be anything with new construction and our ratio is outside of that range because somebody did new construction and that value wasn't considered in our new value. That could be removed from the sales study. Lately, we've been seeing a lot of creative financing and so that's affected the sale price on it. One of the conversations we have sometimes with agricultural property is if you have a farmer that abuts one property with all these other farm fields, is he paying more for that property than he would if he were to live away from that property? So is the sale price truly supported by other market documentation? If it's not, then we consider, for our study purposes, we consider that rejected sale. We don't want things that aren't true and correct or open market available to anybody. We don't want that to inadvertently affect the values that we're placing on properties. Again, just the sales ratio goes over a little bit more, the 90 to 105%. It's not just Homestead County that we take a look at that. So we take a look at our sales countywide. We also take it on a jurisdiction level and then we take it on a classification level. So I'll take a township, for example. If we have Orno-Oko Township, we have multiple studies that we take a look at that. We look at the township as a whole to make sure they're within compliance. We take the residential market to make sure they are, the agricultural market, the commercial market, and any apartments and any of those small jurisdictions. So they each have five or six studies within an overall jurisdiction. And then again, we look at it on a countywide basis along those same lines. So we're kind of balancing all the different property types in all the jurisdictions at one time to make sure that they're uniform and equitably valued. The State Board of Equalization, it's not so much that we've got a local board and we've got an open book and then we have a County Board. We've got a State Board of Equalization as well. So the State Board of Equalization is essentially the Department of Revenue. It's the Commissioner of Revenue, their data analysis department, and a few of their compliance officers. They essentially take a look at not only ours but throughout the state to make sure that we are in compliance. So they're essentially our report cards. So I do all the analysis down here to make sure we're in compliance locally and then all that information goes up to the state and the state does that same. They also take a look to make sure that we are uniform between the different counties that surround us. Agricultural is a great example. People own properties in both counties. And so they want to make sure that between us in Dodge County, us in Winona County, and so forth, don't have huge discrepancies in what our values are. And so they help us blend those together. And if there are certain jurisdictions, then we need to have a reasonable explanation as to why they differ greatly. We do have the opportunity and we did do this year. We have the last couple of years. We can appeal to the Department of Revenue prior to the State Board of Equalization in some of the changes that they are suggesting that we make before they come orders. We have been successful in the last couple of years to have them. We presented information to them and showed them why we thought a residential market should be based on sales going forward, that we shouldn't increase properties as much as what they're suggesting that we should have to. And we've been successful in having them understand why we felt that way. And so they are in agreement with that. And so it's just, we have another person that takes a look at. It doesn't stop with us. We have another person at the department that takes a look at that as well. Yeah, I think it still goes. Yeah. You can go past that one, Clara. So this is our current assessment. Usually at County Board of Equalization, when I present this slide, I usually present it as our final after we've made all of our changes. So I'm going to use this as an opportunity to show where we're at. And then County Board, when we show the same slide, it will show our value after our revalue efforts. So these are our raw ratios that come from the state. So this is where we currently sit with our sales in relation to where our current values are. So you can see the median ratios, what we take a look at. It's essentially the middle of all the sales that come through. So if you have 10 sales, we look at the difference between the fifth and the sixth sale when you put them in order and that's the median ratio. Right now, with all of the sales that we had come through for residentially, there was 2,463 good sales. There were quite a bit more than that that we've gone through and we've taken the ones out through verification of the ones that we don't believe are reflective of the market. Our ratio is at about 89.96%. So if you look at what the state mandated is the 90 to 105%, that tells us that values need to increase due to get us back in compliance of that 90%.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Sure.
What makes a sale not reflective of the market?
It was like I explained to Commissioner Kiskaden. It could be a relative sale we don't conclude in there. It could be creative financing. It could be a multitude of different things if we take a look at it. And there was a reason why that would have sold something different than something similar to what it would have sold. Then we try to, it's not reflective of what the overall market is and so we try to remove those from the sales study.
Yeah. Does that mean that the sale was lower than the market or higher?
Both. Yep. It could be both, depending. Yeah. It could be either or depending on what the situation is. Yep. There are plenty that we pull out or that we have rejected and our value is higher than what the market is. Some of them are good sales and some of them, based on the information that we have, are not. Yep.
And are you going to explain these numbers, that top row, the 9.2, 1.1?
Yep, I will. So the median ratio is where our ratios sit after just looking at the sales that come in and where our value was that we established back on January 2 of 2022 for taxes payable in '23. So the median ratios is what you see. Commercial, we're at 88%. Industrial, we're at 74%. That is not anything reflective just Rochester. It is throughout the state. Industrial property has been selling for quite quickly and for much more than we've got on those properties. Apartments are at 94% and ag is at 77.9% just based on the market. So as you can see by that, to get to our 90%, the big takeaways from this is going to be is that agricultural and industrial properties are going to see quite large increases this year going forward just based on the sales that we've had. We do take a look at the three months into the new study, which is October, November, and December that we're going to use for the next assessment to try to help us determine, are we moving forward in the right direction? And to have that guide us. And those sales are still quite low, so we'll have to go.
This is, I'm sorry.
Yep.
After many years of seeing this, I would have grasped this.
Yeah.
So if I look at the industrial median, that 74.94 says that compared to the actual sale price of industrial properties, our assessment was below the sale prices. Is that what that says?
Yep, we're at 74, almost 75% of what the properties are actually selling for.
And we should have been in the, you know, the 90s.
In the 90s.
So therefore, this year, we will be increasing the assessed value.
Correct.
Industrial will be modifying our process to get closer to actual sales.
Yes, that's what the assessment. So this is going to be pre-assessment. So when we see at County Board of Equalization, I actually have the values. So we just closed our assessment on a Friday. So we're done with all of our revalue work. Those numbers will be reflective of what after our revalue efforts, those values will be reflective of what that is. And they're now in the 90s. So going forward, we'll just have to look at the new sales and see, were our efforts enough to keep up with the industrial market or will we continue to have to increase properties going forward?
Well, it appears that you have, we have to make adjustments in everything except apartments.
And, yep, and then when you look at each of these jurisdictions, you have to look at what jurisdiction you're at. So these are countywide numbers. So there might be, in the small cities, we might not have had to make any adjustments. But in the City of Rochester, we did. We actually made adjustments to fourplexes. Because if you looked at, when we stratify things, the fourplexes were coming in much lower and the larger units were carrying that ratio. So they were higher ratio and the fourplexes were at a lower ratio. So in order to create that uniformity, we increased the fourplexes this year. So they're going to see some increase in values and that should balance that out some. If we look at City of Rochester, we are pretty much across the board throughout the county. We're in the high 80s. And so everybody will see some sort of a small increase for residential properties. Commercial properties, we try to be strategic. It wasn't just overall, all commercial properties. If you take a look at retail and office, they weren't changing as much as some of the automotive or warehouses or that type of thing. So we're not just going to do a blanket increase to certain classifications of properties. We're going to try to be strategic in which of the properties are the ones that, when you stratify them, are needing the increases. So it's just not a blanket increase that we're putting. We're actually applying it to the properties that are showing that they're in, selling for different than what we have values on. So yes, we're working for it. The COD and the PRD that you see along the top, that is just a measure for us, for a measure of uniformity. The coefficient of dispersion, the closer to one that you get indicates a much tighter, uniform assessment. So if you look at the residential, 1.01, we're pretty uniform as we go. If you look at the apartments, sorry, yeah. If you look at PRD, not COD, sorry. If you look at the apartments for the 111, that just shows exactly what I explained. The fourplexes were more out of balance in the higher units. So once we increase the fourplexes to get them in line of where they need to be, hopefully that will correct some of those statistics on it.
Excuse me. How many years are you allowed to be out of, out of our own before the state steps in?
That's all in definition. So every year, the state takes a look at it. And if we're out of compliance, out of the 90 to 105 compliance in any of the jurisdictions or any of the classifications, that's annually. So at the State Board level, they'll take a look at it and they'll give orders. So for example, we just got a report from the state and it listed, I think, 15 or 16 jurisdictions throughout the state that they ordered increases. So we could send notices and then in June, they could say, your residential in Iona is out of compliance. So we're going to order you. And they'd only do it in 5% increments. So they could say, I need you to do residential buildings, 5% increase. And so we would then have to increase all of those residential values. We don't necessarily have to send them new notices to show that it's going up. But we really want to try to avoid that piece of it. Yeah. Because the uniformity kind of goes out the window at that point in time. In regards to how far out of compliance do you have to be for them to step in into a full reassessment? I honestly don't know that answer. I've known there's a couple of jurisdictions that have had mandated reassessments by the state. The latest one was Wabashaw County had one. Commissioner Beer thought it was, I thought it was more around 15 to 20 years ago. He didn't think it was quite that long ago. But I'm not sure to what extent they allow it to go. Again, I don't know if I necessarily want to find that out either.
Right, no.
I don't know what the, I would have to think they would allow you to go through a number of assessments and do corrective actions. We have reviews that are done by our compliance officers. And every year at State Board, we get a State Board report card essentially. And it might say, we're not going to issue any orders, but this is on your watch list. And I know for us, we've had on our watch list, we've had our commercial PRD and COD, which is our uniformity, that's been on there a couple of years. So I think as long as we're working towards progress on it, they're pretty consistent and continuing to watch that. I think it's, once there's no progress made. But again, to what extent they allow that, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then on the bottom, it just shows the acceptable levels for the COD and the PRD. We are with residential. Our statistical measures for our uniformity have always been very good. Commercial, it's tough just because of the inconsistency of what we get for sales. Your sales aren't consistent every year. Some years, you get a lot of warehouse sales and small, you know, dealerships. Sometimes you get retail, sometimes you get office. So when you take a look at, we don't, we don't get enough sales in a certain category to really make the distinction as to how out of, you know, uniform that is, but yeah.
I'm sorry. The PRD numbers on the graph up above, you're, you know, around 1 and down below, we're around 100. Am I missing something?
That's the acceptable levels. So our levels are the top, the numbers up on top. And when you look at some of our, like IWA, which is our International Association of Assessing Officers, there's the MWA and Department of Revenue, they actually, that chart along the bottom is what they consider acceptable. So if you're within that range, you're in compliance.
I think you're missing. Missing the decimal points.
Yeah, I don't really understand it.
The PRD 101 up there, right? Really reflects 98.9 in the bottom.
Yes, okay.
We're not 100 times without them.
No, no.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
The other thing that might be worth, because we've had questions on, when you have a commercial building that quickly turns over and somebody flips it for a profit.
Yep.
Those are considered not acceptable or?
It depends.
I know there was a concern about local.
There was, yeah. So there's a couple of different things. Typically, residentially is the same way. If you have a flipped property, you typically accept the first sale and reject the second sale just because there's usually been some improvement or some sort of work done to it. So that's not considered a good sale in the aspect of where our value was on January 2. The first sale is reflective of what that market is, of what we had. The second sale typically is after some sort of new construction or anything that we haven't yet captured in our assessment. So we would capture that in our next assessment cycle. There was a concern for, in the commercial industry, There was a concern for, uh, in the commercial industry of some parcels that were sold and then essentially flipped to a conglomerate of investors. And I think Commissioner Sanjum, you actually had that, that question for us. And that's one of the things during sales verification, that our staff actually saw some inconsistencies of some of those sales and had some serious questions as to whether or not they should be good sales. So prior to that conversation even happening, our staff actually already had talked to the Department of Revenue to have those removed from our study as not being reflective of the market. Yeah, they were inflated prices that we felt that we didn't want it to affect other types of property within city of Rochester. So we had already had those removed from there, so.
Thank you.
Yep, it's a good thing we did because they weren't.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How do you assess new construction for determining market value? What do you do with that?
Uh, so our values are established every January 2nd. So if a parcel is partially completed, whatever portion of that parcel is completed as of January 2nd, that's the value that we determine for that particular year. So a lot of, uh, new construction is, is based on cost. And so we take a look at, you know, what's out there, square footage, all the different attributes, just like we would if it was a fully constructed parcel. And then we have to make a determination as to what portion of that parcel or what portion of that building as a percentage is completed as of that particular date and time. So we, our staff might do, start doing new construction in the fall of the year. We might make multiple trips back to that parcel just to make sure that we give them the benefit of the doubt and we get closer to that January 2nd or the end of December and make a call on what the percentage complete is. So if it's not fully constructed, they're not paying a full amount of tax. It could be over a two-year period. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm, I, I was actually thinking more of, of many of the apartment buildings that have been going up and how you determine the, the value, the property tax value of rental properties that are in different kinds of locations across the community, different sizes. How you determine their first initial market value when they really aren't being, they're not, they're on the market for rental, but they're not on the market for sale. So you don't have a sales comparison.
Yeah, a lot of the apartment, um, properties are valued on an income basis. So it's the income they generate. Um, and so we'll use like apartment complexes for that to determine what's the market rate of those rents and what type. So we've got plenty of apartments to compare them to, right? And so we'll take a look at, like, say over by West Circle Drive, all those new apartments that are being built out by Hy-Vee. We'll take a look and say, what's most comparable to that complex? And take a look, what are rents selling for, different things, the vacancies? And so we'll do it based on an income. And if it's not completed, then we'll have to do a percentage of that. Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And this is what I was talking about for the assessment timeline. And it's a lot of dates and, and things to absorb, so you've got it in your packet. It just shows that the October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022 sales period, that's used for our January 2nd, 2023 assessment values for taxes payable in '24. You'll see that September 30th, right there, before the assessment date, we are already into taxes payable in 2025, before we even send out notices for taxes payable in 2024. So in September, beginning of October 1st of last year, we were already into the next year. So we actually, in the assessor's office, we juggle three assessments at one time. The assessment that they're paying taxes on this year, the one they're going to pay on, and then the future one that we're planning for. So you'll notice by this, this chart, by the time the county board happens in June, we're already three quarters of the way through our next sales study for our next assessment. So our staff is well on their way to, to creating values that people are going to pay taxes on in 2025. Truth and taxation notices are sent out in November. Again, that's after county boards. County boards is the last day for people to ask to make any value changes on any property for the 23 assessment taxes payable in '24. That's statutory. Once all the appeal processes are done, we're done creating, or changing values. The only thing that taxpayers are able to do at that point in time is to file in tax court. That is their only relief until the next, uh, next appeal period, which happens, like you say, every April. So when county, or when taxpayers come to, um, well, that's on the last slide, but if you want to go to the next one, Clara? Thank you. There's a couple of things in here that has restrictions, and then I'll show you the last slide. There are some restrictions for all of the county boards, but the county, county board, all of the local boards, excuse me, but the county board specifically. And I'll just go over a couple of them. Again, you can't consider prior year assessments. We're only looking at the January 2nd of 20, 2023. The board, while they can change value individually, they cannot change the aggregate assessment by more than 1%. So for county board, it's countywide, so it's a pretty big number. But if you go over the 1% of making any change, then none of the adjustments, they're all null and void. So at a local level, we've got to be careful, especially for some of the smaller jurisdictions. If they, if the township boards or the city councils want to make some changes, they have to be very careful in some instances that they don't go to the point where they go over the 1% because then they have to be all called null and void.
Mr. Chair, what's our experience with adjustments being made? Is this a, an, a, an unusual circumstance? Is it typical? Do we have particular jurisdictions where they tend to make more adjustments?
So there's a couple of things. The taxpayers have the ability to call our office and have us do a review prior to the boards. And so we do do that. Our, our staff, it's a small percentage. Once we have the conversation with them, that we actually will make a change. But our change is based on either the data that we have on the property or really sales that we have found that justify a reduction in value. Once we go to local board, um, I have a chart from probably a couple of years ago that actually show how many people went to the local boards and how many adjustments were made. It's quite small that we even have people come to local boards. Probably in the last 10 years, we've only had probably zero to max of five at each of the local boards. Depending on what the request is, we usually get one or two at each of the boards. It's not a huge number. The boards are pretty good at making sure that the values are reflective of what they should be. Most of the, the parcels that we find that they're making changes on, maybe small agricultural ones that are, or non-buildable parcels, things that might have information that we may not have had at the time the assessment was done. But overall, it's a fairly low number.
Thank you.
For as many parcels as we have.
Ms. Chair, can I just follow up on this slide? So just speaking from an example point of view, if, uh, if a person walked in here with a, a building valued at what you believe is $10 million, would the discretion of the board be then that we could not lower that value any more than $100,000?
No, the aggregate is the total, the total value of the county. So it's not on a per person basis, it's for the total value. Yep. So like I said, for the county board, it would be, it would be quite a large number.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The board can't exempt property. Only the county assessor can do that. And a member of the board can't make, obviously, changes to, to a parcel that he or she has conflict of interest or any financial interest in it. The other thing is, the local, the local and county board cannot make changes benefiting a property owner who was refused entry by the assessor. There are parcels that we have requested inspections on, especially if somebody calls us for a review. We understand when we go to their property, it's their property. If we knock on the door and they asked us to leave, that's the choice, you know, and we'll abide by that. We'll do the best that we can without an actual inspection of the property. If they don't want us into the interior of the property, we try to at least do an exterior inspection to make sure that we have our measurements correct and that we have, you know, any of the data from the exterior. But as a boards of equalization, if they refuse entry to the assessor, they technically aren't supposed to make any changes to those properties. And again, we have very few that have, that ask us to actually leave the property. We have quite a few that don't want us in the house, which is understandable. But they, most of them at least let us walk the exterior of the property to verify the information. And then I think the very last slide just talks about what Mary had talked about, the truth and taxation notice. And this, I think, is the biggest piece, the most important piece of it. When truth and taxation time comes in November, we cannot any longer make any changes to any of those properties. The truth and taxation meeting is truly about budgets and it's not about value anymore. Those values were established and finalized in June of, of this given year. So once county board meets, because county board actually meets after state board of equalization. So once county board meets, and I think this year it's the 20th or something of June, uh, once we meet, we're done. We can't make any other changes unless it's a tax court change.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I have a, just a general curiosity question. How, what percentage of all the properties in Olmsted are considered tax exempt properties? And you don't have to answer today, I'm just, it's a curiosity question. I think particularly for the city of Rochester, that's often a question of, since we have educational institutions, research institutions, you know, how much of our property church is?
Are you looking for dollar amount versus a number?
I've been more interested in parcels, I think.
I, I haven't. I actually, actually just ran a report on that and I can get that to you. It's, it's, it's on my computer, but, um, yes.
I didn't really thought, think you'd have it right there.
I, I have a number in my head, I think it is, but I'll, I'll give you the exact number when I get back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Chair, could you share that with all of us?
Yeah, I certainly can.
Send that to all of us, we appreciate it.
Yep, I can do that, yeah. And of course, that number changes from time to time based on, you know, who no longer qualifies for exemption and who applies for it, but it'll be pretty close.
And Mr. Chair, another sort of curiosity question is, with all of the development going on in, in our countywide, countywide, particularly the city of Rochester, what kind of increase are we seeing overall in market value? Are you projecting? I know we'll get that when we do our budget, but if you, if you can.
I can get you those numbers as well. Yep, like I say, we just finalized our assessment on Friday. And so our system is closed and we'll be able to run those numbers and get some from, from fairly good numbers for you.
Thank you.
So I will get that as well. So I will get you both new construction and just overall revalue, so you'll have both of those. Okay.
The assessments around the state have been running about 20% increase on average. Is Olmsted in that groove? Are we all above or under?
20% in which category? In residential, um, this last year, we were, we were most definitely in that. I think the study that, and I think we should be able to share that study that we just got from the state, that it has some of the maps in it that show exactly that. And it shows actually for the different classes of property. It shows throughout the state what the average assessment or increased value was. I would say on the northern part of the state, they actually, around the lakes, they saw more of a 50% increase in some of the residential and lake values. And a lot of that, I think, is because of just the time we're in where people are working more from home and so they can work up north. And so they've seen a lot of sales up there. Around here, yeah, we were right in that range, about 20%. Around the metro area, I think, was a little bit higher than what we were. But, yeah, the entire state. We didn't see quite that big of an increase this year. But residential properties, regardless of interest rates, values are still increasing over what we saw last year. Yeah. And just on a side note, and this goes back to your question from me in the last board of equalization, I just want you to know that the city of Rochester has actually passed a resolution that they presented to me, they notified me in December, gave me a resolution in January that they are choosing to no longer hold their board of equalization. And so the duties and powers of the city of Rochester's board of equalization are now upon the county board. So we very well may see, we will still take calls in our office, we will still answer, we will still do the exact same thing we did. But it allows more time because it doesn't give a specific date for their meeting. It actually allows them, I think on the notices I put from April 3rd, I want them to notify us by the 15th of May so that we can, you know, have time to review the property. But we could very well see an influx of people from the city of Rochester at the board of equalization just because of timing. There's a certain date. If we can, if we can review the property and give them notification by the 31st of May, then we, we are able to, to do so, have it taken care of and not come to the county board. But that means there's still 20 days in June that it could lead to an influx. I'm hoping not, but it could, it could lead to that. So they've transferred their powers actually to the county board. And they've done it for a minimum of three years, but how that resolution's written, I'm not sure that, that it's just for three years, so.
Surprise.
Chair, talk to us about that.
I don't want to be rude about that either. I'm sure they meant to.
You got questions on there?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Sanjum.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, I have a, I have a question. This is kind of hypothetical, but I, I think that it's not unreasonable to think about this. It might be particularly more true in Minneapolis and to a lesser extent in St. Paul, you know, given, I'll just say, the crime and violence issues. But, you know, the world has changed, even in Rochester. And there's a lot of downtown office properties while there are still being lease payments made. They're vacant and predictably, I would suppose, the market values on these have, at least from the standpoint of being re-rented, have, have probably gone down. And from the standpoint of, of their ability to sell them at the old price and, and, you know, we hear that in some cases, the, the reuse of these buildings is probably not for office. It might be for apartments. But for a person that owns a building like that, that's caught in that situation, I, I believe it wouldn't be unreasonable for that person to come before this board and, and plead their case relative to the changing world and, and home officing and things like that. Could, could the board take that into consideration or is it just all based on whatever the sale price was?
Yes, you can, as would we. We still have to take a look at, um, we recognize that a lot of, of downtown is, is probably starting to become vacant, that leases are starting to come due and they're having a harder time. So we'll continue to watch that and look at the vacancy on some of those properties. We do have to take a look at, when you, when you increase or decrease values, we have to take a look at truly what those properties are selling for, what they would and what that vacancy, how, what effect that would have on the properties. So we have to have some sort of market indication for that. If a property went from 100% occupied and the lease goes for another 15 years, whether or not some body is in that, the lease payments are still there to them. If the lease comes due to that and we take a look at it and say 50% of that, that building is vacant, we'll take a look at that and it, it truly will decrease the value of that property, maybe for that given year. But we don't want to be too terribly hasty in just saying because you have vacant, uh, vacant space in that property, that we're automatically going to reduce your value. There is already a given amount of vacancy that we give to properties, which is the assumption that leases are going to turn over from time to time. So really, it's the ones that we would want to look at is the ones that have a truly, a large amount of vacancy that maybe was unforeseen or something new. Again, we would just continue to monitor that and take that into consideration. Could the board do it? They could, but then we'd have to be prepared to make sure that whatever we're doing to that one could affect other properties that might not have come to the board. So we just have to be careful about how much we're doing and, and the basis of, of why we're making that change.
Ms. Bar, can I just make one comment? I'm just really totally impressed with this, with our staff and, and their ability to respond to these kind of questions. It's, it's marvelous, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Chair, I do have a question. It's, it's more of a curiosity. I've noticed that in my neighborhood, the Kuzey Park neighborhood, I'd, I'd estimate about 20% of the single family or maybe duplex homes are Airbnbs. So are those considered residence, a residence or is that a, um, commercial?
Well, that is a conversation that is being had at the state level. A couple of years ago, three or four years ago, that was a big topic that they had. Airbnbs were at one time going to be considered commercial property. Really, if you take a look at apartment property is somewhere between what they pay for taxes, somewhere between a residential rate and a commercial rate. And so they, after a year or so and having some pushback from some of the property owners that have Verbos and Airbnbs, they actually went back and there's, it's more of a designated apartment type class. So they're kind of in between. The hard part with that is the city of Rochester finally came up with a system that they're, um, they're licensing rental properties like that. So we have the ability within the permitting. So, we have the ability within the permitting system to run some reports and find those. Otherwise, if you've ever gone in an Airbnb or a Verbo site, they don't give you the address to anything as you're looking. They give you a location. So, they give you like a nice circle around the area and say it's somewhere in here until you lease it and then, or rent it, and then they give you the address for it. So, to find all those is really difficult to make sure we have them all. There are counties and cities throughout the state, most in the metro area, that are hiring outside companies to actually run like a data mining, there are companies out there that run data mining searches to find them all. It's expensive, but there's got to be a balance because if you get some of them because you know what their addresses are, but there are another 50% out there that you don't know what their addresses are, then the inequities of how you're treating the same types of property are much different. So, as we go into revalues, we're trying to find them. We're trying to go through the permitting system to see who's been licensed and what they've been licensed under to try to catch some of those. So, there are some challenges with that, but you're right, there's more and more that we're seeing. Sometimes there's just the garage over, or the, the unit over the garage that we're finding sometimes. So, in that case, we would have to split class, split class those properties when we find them. Yeah, it's ongoing, it's ever-changing. And it used to be, they used to say if you leased it for 14 days versus 30, it fit into one category. So, we sent a survey out and we got all sorts of information that was all over the place. So, we're still trying to work through that.
This is kind of off-topic, but when we go around and we do an appraisal on a property and we see something that's not right, like say we see 100,000 tires on a property, do we have an obligation to report it to anybody?
Do we have an obligation to report it? As an assessor, I don't know if there, morally ethically, there's nothing in statute that says we have to. Should we, we, we probably should say, you know, especially in light of some of the things we have in the past, it hasn't been something that's been done. But as we go through its conversations we're having in our office and it's a matter of who should, who should we give this information to and then allow them to, to figure out what they want to do with it at that point in time? We do do that sometimes with the city of Rochester for sure, when we see a, a lot of information or if we have property owners that have complaints in regards to their valuation because of whatever exterior environmental things are around them, we give that information to the city of Rochester and, and, and allow them to do what they need to do in regards to contacting or they, I, I, I don't know, they might choose not to do anything with it, but we can give that information. So, yes, in the future, as we're going out to do some of those properties in the townships that we see some of that, it's a matter of determining who's the correct person to contact to relay that information to.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
More questions?
Yeah. Well, just a second. Commissioner Rosman, you haven't asked any questions today.
No, I'm good, very informative presentation.
All right, Commissioner Mealer. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I always feel like I need like a 15-minute recess after taxation, but we'll just take a deep breath and we'll continue to move on. All right, so Rochester area economic development incorporated will provide an informational overview of their work. Is that online?
It looks, Mr. Chair, sorry, it looks like they are not here, so we'll double check with them and see if we can reschedule them. Just as a reminder, B C and D are part of our tour of appropriation agencies, so we'll check in there and.
So, maybe they'll come, we'll go to see and maybe come back. Is that, all right. Rochester Public Library provided informational overview of their work. There we are.
Good morning, Chair Wright and Commissioners. We thank you so much for letting us be here to tell you what is happening at the library and give you just a little bit of an update after the last three years of very, the things they didn't teach us in library school years, those, that's what our last three years were, right? Wanted to start with the very strong message that we are in fact 100% open. The scaffolding in front of the libraries for some indicates otherwise, but we are open. The building has been, we did get a new roof and there's facade working happening on the outside of the building and that is continuing as weather permits, which unfortunately has been getting in the way a lot recently. So, the first thing I like to start out with when I talk to you folks really is highlighting the bookmobile that does travel into the county. That's, that's one of, obviously, all Olmsted County residents can use the downtown location, but our bookmobile is the, out in the county service that we do provide regularly. It continues to be the busiest bookmobile in the state of Minnesota. In fact, it is so busy based on circulation that it is busier than 30 of the 36 libraries in the Selko region. So, it is a very impressive little truck that does make it out to the community. And we're starting to see more folks, you know, returning to all of our different services, but to the bookmobile as well, so more visits. It was very highly used over the last few years and used in a little bit of a different way. We found that visitors said they would like longer stops, so we did change our schedule to make longer stops, which meant fewer locations that the bookmobile is going to, but customers, at least over the last three years, thought that that was a better system. And we're, we're watching and monitoring to see if that carries forward now that the building is much more open than it was over the last three years. Like I mentioned, the library is open and not only is it open, it's open seven days a week, year-round, which is a pretty significant change. We are the only library that is open eight hours on Sundays in the state of Minnesota. We did that intentionally. In 2020, we adopted a new strategic plan with a mission of welcoming all to connect and learn, and we want to make sure that our services are available to folks and having times where we have free parking available right next to the building. It's important that we have our building open as well. And we made this change, surveyed community members and, and users and found that this schedule is one that community members really preferred and we still see lots of, of good use on Sundays, but we do have a lot of folks that aren't necessarily aware that we have this ongoing schedule, regular schedule throughout the year for decades. We had a summer schedule and a school year schedule, but we have switched to this year-round consistent schedule to make it easier for customers and to continue to provide that ongoing service during the summer months because not everybody goes away to the lake over the weekends. There are certainly lots of folks that do, but not everybody does, and they still have an option of an activity to do and an ability to connect to our resources on the weekends. We, as we've been kind of coming back and right sizing everything and, and reemerging from the last three years, we are, are really, again, right sizing what we are doing. We've had ongoing, you know, space constraints in our, our building. And so, one of the things that's been taking a while to get back online is access to meeting space. And we thankfully will be launching this in the spring, bringing back free community space. During the, during the last year, our library board did vote to change our policy and provide meeting space for free of charge. So, we do expect, you know, over the last three years, we didn't have a lot of demand as folks weren't gathering as much, but we do expect that the one meeting room that we will have available for folks will be in, in pretty high demand. We did have a smaller space that was available for community members to use pre-pandemic. Unfortunately, we need that space for, for workroom area type activities so that we can continue doing outreach, which is something that has been ongoing over the last three years and we expect to continue to increase in the community. In addition to our meeting rooms, we have folks that are coming into our spaces and returning more to use our internet that we saw during the pandemic was essential. Folks really need that ongoing connection, whether it's wifi, whether it's using our computers and our internet in the building. Or during the pandemic, we also were able to receive a $619,000 grant to provide 1,000 connected Chromebooks to community members. That grant funding has run out, so we do still have those Chromebooks available, but customers need to use places with free wifi, which we of course still do offer. Folks are using the internet still, whether it's, you know, filling out applications for jobs or doing research or for recreational use, we still see very full computer use within the library. And because we're expecting snow this week, we need to talk about the seed library because the spring is on the horizon. The seed library officially launched, opened March 1st this year and within its first day, we had almost 300 people that came to borrow seeds. Folks borrow them with the intent that they will take them home, grow their plants and then collect seeds and bring those seeds back. Our community donated seeds program continues to get bigger, but we hope to increase that. And so, we will be having a class in April, I believe, on how to grow and then collect seeds. But again, that's our goal is to make this a more self-sustaining program. But it's been great because it's highlighted another form of literacy, gardening literacy, and also connects people to the resources that we already have in the library, whether it's programs on, on growing seeds or the extensive collection we have on gardening and growing. Something that we've been really excited about this last year and are excited to be doing more with the Health, Housing and Human Services Division of Olmsted County is our social worker services. So, in 20, late 2021, throughout 2022, we had grant funding that was cobbled together to provide and, and test this theory, to provide a social worker in the library to see if folks would access social worker services in the library. That proved to be successful and then that funding ran out, but we are really excited about this new partnership. We're calling this a, a social worker 2.0 pilot project. We will have a GPS social worker that will be doing outreach at the library one day for a few hours a week. And we're interested to see how that, that works and what data the county does get from that 2.0 partnership. What's really nice about the library is it's a place where there's not a stigma for folks to come and receive help. They're, they're coming to a place where, again, there's not that stigma attached and it's a very easy place to feel welcome and, and could be a new opportunity for county services and access to county services. Like I mentioned before, we continue to have ongoing space issues at the library. We, in late January, we did host a joint city council library board study session to kind of review some of those challenges that we're facing. Just this last week, we hosted stuffed animal storytime where we crammed 198 people and their stuffies into the library's auditorium, which was a fabulous event. We continue to do what we can, some, in some cases, to mitigate the challenges. In some cases, that means not having a meeting space for folks anymore, a smaller meeting room that we had before that now needs to be used for a work area so that we can continue our outreach work. But we're, we're doing what we can and mitigating as best we can in, in the spaces that we have. So, those are some of the updates. I knew I wanted, I was told to keep it fairly brief, but I also wanted to open this up to questions that you might have about our services and things that we, we have or, or any questions in general.
Any questions, go ahead.
I have about three questions, actually. The first is, does the library happen to have one of our social service kiosks?
Yes.
And is that being used, you know, you see that getting good use there?
We do not. I'm sure there's data on how many uses that it, that it gets. Anecdotally, I can tell you, we don't see a lot of folks that are interacting with the kiosk.
Okay. The role of libraries seems to be changing. And so, this is sort of a two-part question. You talk about outreach, so maybe you can explain what you mean by outreach? And then, you know, there's, there's a whole discussion about are libraries really social service centers now or community centers or something beyond what you were taught in library school, as you mentioned earlier? But what is the, there's a, there's a little bit of public discussion about what you're knitting, aren't you sticking to your knitting? And why are you expanding your role? Do you want to talk to us about that at all?
Yeah, libraries do represent the communities in which they serve and do try to meet the communities in which they serve, whether it's some libraries that are offering seeds, whether it's some libraries that offer yoga classes that really are meant to be representative of what their communities and community members are looking for and are asking for. In the case of social services, you know, we have, we still receive those questions at the reference desk. We are a trusted source of, of not just books and print materials and other databases and pieces of information, but people. And so, sometimes we would get a question that would start with, where are your books on, on housing? When really the question was, how do I get assistance because I'm about to be evicted? So, we still get those questions at the reference desk. Having a social worker in the library gave us an ability to make that connection and point somebody to an expert, because you were correct, we are not social workers and, and we recognize that. Libraries are, we've had, we often, we continue to have these conversations too. What are our core competencies? What are we doing really, really well that we need to focus much of our attention and energy on that if we stop doing, others aren't going to be doing it? And we've, we've really had those discussions internally as a leadership team focusing on, you know, that information services piece, that access and that inclusivity piece and providing people a space where they can have those natural connections still continues to be something that we hear from customers, whether it's I need to meet up with a tutor and have a tutoring session in a space or work on a group study project or just socially wanting to connect in a space that is completely free. There is no, you know, we try to remove as many barriers as we can to access and is a welcoming and inviting space. We really want to represent our community and, and welcome every member of our community and provide a space that feels welcoming and inclusive to all. So, I know that doesn't act, that's very broad and vague.
Well, and then what are you doing for outreach?
So, for outreach, what our youth services team has been doing is going to schools, for example, the, the GSA, the Gay Street Alliance team and, and doing outreach there, doing schools, visits with, oh, and I always forget the name of the, the super great institution that provides services for children with autism, going out to their location and bringing books and bringing stories and bringing activities. Because sometimes the library isn't the best spot for that interaction to be happening, but those books should still be getting into the hands of folks. Another example would be our homebound delivery and getting out into the community, folks that cannot leave their home. We do have that service and we've had that for a number of years where we have folks that take items and drop them off at home for folks that cannot leave their home. Deposit collection, bookmobile is really a type of outreach. So, those are the different types of, of outreach that we offer. The things that we're not doing inside our, our physical building, knowing that there's, there's a need for both, that people use us differently.
Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is probably a question I should know, but I don't as a, as a new person. What is the, and maybe you don't either, the annual contribution by the county to the library organization? You know that or does anybody in the room know that?
Our administrator.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, the libraries are on a minimum or a mandatory amount that we have, a statutorily defined amount that we, we must appropriate, but we have a formula that goes above and beyond that. I believe that Rochester library was 1.4 million last year and then the, the smaller libraries, although we, we're not having them all come through the tour of appropriation agencies, but Chatfield and, oh, help me out, Stewartville. agencies, but Chatfield and, oh, help me out, Stewartville, Pine Island, I know I'm missing somebody, St. Charles. They all are also on the same formula with us, with the city of Rochester, which is based on the number of, it's based on circulation for the population that lives outside the city. I think I got that right, so.
And Ms. Chair, this was, did you say 4 million?
1.4.
No, but we are open to that.
I believe our mandated amounts, our mandated amount is in the neighborhood of 850,000, but every year with the board's agreement, we stay on that formula and increase it a slight amount every year so that we don't get way behind.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may share a, a comment. I feel like I'm stating the obvious, but it bears saying that what, how extraordinarily fortunate we are in this community to have the Rochester Public Library. It's, it's easy to, to, to undervalue something that we're so used to, especially if we don't have a comparison. But the, our, our public library serves the community, it serves literacy, it serves people who need of social services. The, the continuum of the services you provide, from children and families to vulnerable adults who are seeking services there and beyond, is really an extraordinary, is really extraordinary, and I consider the library a treasure. And I wanted to say so. Thank you.
Commissioner Pedelke Smith is our representative to the Rochester Library Board. So, thank you. The question that Commissioner Chris Gaden asked is really directed at the heart of the funding question, which is, what is a library? And what is it that the Olmsted County community wants the library to be? And then how do we fund that? And I think, I think you have a very difficult task in trying to inform the community on just what a library should be. So I have been to some other libraries. I was just in New Brighton the other day. I think that's Ramsey County, could be Hennepin, I'm not exactly sure. They have a, they have an indoor recreation area for kids.
The library's in the community center.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I, I wasn't sure if it's a community center and a library, a library and a community center. But I think that those are some of the models that maybe you're looking at, I'm not exactly sure. But I think that those are the questions that you'll have to answer in the future.
Yeah, yeah. And it isn't, I think really, the library is viewed differently by the user, and that is, that, that's really how a library should be. All users should see themselves and see themselves reflected and see their, they're using it a little bit different. And we, we have some folks who might not ever step into our library building, but use our digital services to no end. And, which is why we, at current level, it's a challenge to keep up. And you may be very low on the list in, on a popular title because it's, it's really hard to keep up with that demand. And then we have others who, you know, during the pandemic, it showed some of those things that, that ways that folks wanted to use the library. Something as simple as having our art room open, a room with markers and paper where children could come in and create something and then hang it in a public place for others to see was really, really important. And then, of course, our, our bread and butter, the things that we're known for, our books. We have one of the, the best collections and we're really fortunate to have that in, you know, I think it speaks to just even our, our focus on education and innovation and learning here in this community, that we have such a, a great physical collection of materials.
Yeah. I noticed you have somebody in back of you that keeps nodding their head. Yes, yes, yes. Did you have comments as well?
I'm always really excited about the library. I love the, I present now to Channel One Food Bank, Virginia Merritt, and I can talk about our Channel One's partnership with the library, and I'm one of those people who uses the digital things. I should calculate how much money I use a year in value of a digital hold. I'm enthusiastic.
Okay, that's great. Are there any other questions from the board? Anybody from our, my right? No questions yet? Okay. All right, we have exhausted our questions.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your continued support of the library. We really, really appreciate it. Thought I better hide my Rochester, City of Rochester name tag after the earlier conversation about. Thank you so much, we really appreciate everything you do.
All right, and now we have Channel One.
I'm also down to Channel One.
So it's your turn to nod then.
Well, hello, I'm Virginia Merritt. I'm the executive director of Channel One Food Bank, and we are the food bank for Southeast Minnesota and one county in Wisconsin. And what we're here to talk about today is, we are your local food shelf and other services that we provide in Olmsted County. Ooh, it worked, okay. So our mission is to strengthen food access and build healthy communities. So food access means, so hunger is, I'm ready for lunch, I feel hungry right now. Food access is, am I confident that I have a lunch that's going to fuel my body for the rest of the day? And also, do I have a plan and access to food for dinner for my family tonight and the next night? So not only do we want people's tummies not to be hungry, but we also want them to have access to enough food consistently. So their number one worry isn't, do I have dinner tonight? Do I have lunch tomorrow? And our vision is that every community in our region is, is food secure. We always lead with our values. Our number one value is that people experiencing food security are at the center of everything that we do. We create an inclusive culture that welcomes and respects the diversity of the people we serve, employees and volunteers, and honors the fundamental dignity of all individuals. So what that practically means to us is that our food shelf and all of our services, our mobile markets that I'll talk about, I'll talk about later, our delivery, our partnership with the public schools, we make people feel welcome and like the service is for them. We don't shame people for needing food assistance. We try to have food that appeals and is appropriate for everyone in our community, and we enter partnerships that are strategic to serve the whole community. An example would be the partnerships that we've had with IMAA to access food stability boxes, as well as our partnership with Pomoja Women, which is an organization that champions African women in the community. We also recognize how important innovation and improvement is, and we work in partnership. And so our partnerships in this community and our other communities are very important to us. So services available in Olmsted County are food shelf. We are the second biggest food shelf in the state of Minnesota and by far the biggest outside of the Twin Cities metro. And I am also sure that we are the best food shelf. Why are we the best food shelf? Because we are 100% shopper choice. We welcome people to come shop weekly. Traditional food shelves come monthly, and we emulate that regular grocery store environment. So people come in, the first time you shop with us, it could take about seven minutes to register, probably not that long, and then after that, it's just, oh, hey, what's your name or what's your birthday? We look you up, still got four in the household, Ms. Merritt? Yep, you're checked in, you're shopping. So to make that, to make it feel as normal as possible and to, to keep things moving. Our new space that we opened in 2020 was designed by QuickTrip, our wonderful partners out of La Crosse. And I say that because QuickTrip wants you to know you can always get in and out of there quickly and get those staples that you need. We also want you to get in and out quickly, feel welcome, and get those staples that you need. And I'll talk in detail about each of the services available. So at our food shelf, we are a super shelf. A super shelf makes the healthy choice the easy choice. So I know a few of you have been to see us, and I hope we'll get the rest of you in soon. But when you walk in, the first thing you see is the picture that's on, on my right, and that is the fresh fruit, food and vegetables. And so we partner with the University of Minnesota Extension, and so that we use that extension knowledge about consumer science, and that tells us that the first thing that you see is what you're going to grab the most of. So that's why it's the produce and the fruits and the vegetables. And then you walk on through the shelf and you end with those breads, sweets and treats. So we have given up in determining what is and is not healthy. And that's because the more we learn, the more we learn, healthy for who. So I, I learned recently that diabetics shouldn't be having a bunch of root vegetables. But we're not going to not have carrots, because carrots are healthy for a lot of people. So our goal is to have robust choices so that people can choose the food that is best for them and makes the most sense for them. We started a movement in the region, and now other food shelves in our 14-county region are also going to this model, which makes us super excited because we want the whole region to have, to have robust choices and be able to live healthy lives. So no ID required at the Channel One food shelf, no mail, no proof of income. We follow those TFAP guidelines, and that's the government commodities. The Emergency Food Assistance Program is what TFAP stands for. And so that also means that we serve people up to 300% of federal poverty. Food stamps go to 200%, 200%. School lunch is 185%. So fun fact, if you go to apply for, if you apply for food stamps, you are auto-enrolled in school lunch, which is awesome. But you could apply for food stamps, or you could apply for school lunch and be rejected because you make like $1,000 a year too much. So you're between 200 and 185. But if you then go apply for food stamp or for SNAP or food stamps, you would be auto-enrolled into school lunch. So there's 15%, a 15% income gap that can actually get into school lunch by qualifying for SNAP. I think that's interesting because I guess I think regulation is interesting, and I bet you all do too, given the service that you're doing as commissioners to the, to the community. And we've got to thank you because the food shelf is what your county funding, what your county funding has supported. So I asked Linda Lovick, our assistant director, who's been with us for 40 years, how long the county has been supporting Channel One and if we had records back that far. And we decided not to go through 30 years of minutes, but of board meeting minutes, but she's certain for at least 30 years that you have been supporting Channel One Food Shelf. So thank you for that, and thank you for growing with us. And especially thank you for this last year, when you've given us significant extra funding during what is essentially a hunger crisis like we haven't seen, which I'll talk about statistics a little bit more. So to, to receive food from a TFAP food shelf, which is us, you need to be physically present in Minnesota, and you have to attest that your income is less than 300%. So what that means at Channel One is that when you sign up, you'll tell us how many people are in your household, then a chart flashes up on the computer screen in front of you, a green line highlights your family size and income, and then the person checking you in goes, can you confirm that your income is at or above the level on the green line? I've checked many people in and they always look at me and laugh and go, yeah, way below. But we have to, we do, we ask the question so we can keep getting those government commodities. And being able to serve up to 300% has been crucial these, this past almost year, because the hunger gap we're seeing is people who don't qualify for food stamps, who are, who are working and who can't keep up with the inflationary grocery prices. So the working poor are being hit hardest during this time of high grocery prices. And some of you may have noticed, eggs was on the news a lot a couple of weeks ago. Those basic commodity prices are just through the roof and people can't get, can't keep up with it. And also talking to our colleagues at Olmsted County Community Services, they especially, I think late summer, saw a big increase in SNAP applications, and it was people who didn't qualify for SNAP, because it's true, they can't afford their groceries, but it's also true, they're over 200% of federal poverty. So loose guidelines, family of four, 300% of federal poverty is about $83,000 annually. Family of two, or sorry, of, for, and it's more like 50,000 if you're looking at 200% of federal poverty. So there's a lot of people between 50, 50,000 and $80,000, it's a huge difference in income when it comes to your budget. But if you're over about, about that 50-ish mark for a family of four, you're not qualifying for anything. And we truly are the safety net. And what we see is heartening as far as like what we believe about humanity, I think, because even though people can come shop with us monthly, 56% of people only shop once a month. So what that means is that people are using us if they have an emergency and they're between that 200 and 300% or just truly as, as supplemental when it's a tough month. So it's heartening because we can have choice, we can welcome people more than once a month, but it doesn't mean somebody's going to come in and just clear us out. So we can trust people to shop and without a bunch of regulations, it's really burdensome on them and on us. We also notice, we don't notice, we know because of our records, that when, when we don't have limits on food, people take less. And that's what the University of Minnesota Extension told us, and it's totally been proved out to be true. So if you think about it, if you go in and you're shopping and you see the cereal area and you see a two, you're like, okay, I can take two. If you see no sign, well, what do I do? Well then, well, what do I need? How much cereal do we go through? And people actually take what they're going to go through. So I personally, again, a little bit dorky, I find it fascinating, and I'm also thrilled that the consumer science that the University of Minnesota Extension taught us absolutely turned out to be true. Oh, and then, gosh, I'm not advancing the slides, sorry. You'll also notice that if you, if people qualify for any of the other county programs, they automatically qualify to shop at Channel One. But I can't imagine you qualify for any of those programs and be over 200%, except for maybe WIC. So if you qualify for Olmsted County program, you qualify for Channel One, and we do ask that question as well. We also run the Commodity Supplemental Food Program for the, for our, our 13-county service area in Minnesota. This is a federal program, it's for seniors. It is only appropriate for seniors that can prepare their own meals. Early on, when I was at Channel One, we talked to our partners at Family Service Rochester, and we said, oh, could you toss these boxes on the meals on wheels trucks? And they're like, ooh, great idea. Then they surveyed their, their shopper, their clients, and the point of getting meals on wheels, part of it, is that you can't cook. So note, we should not put a box of groceries you have to cook and give it to people on meals on wheels who cannot cook. So that's why we have partners and we talk to people before making decisions. But we are partnering with Family Service Rochester and other organizations to do outreach for CSFFP to people who do cook. We deliver these to the, to several low-income, senior high-rises in town, and then people can also pick them up from Channel One. It is a stricter program as far as eligibility. You have to have proof of age and proof of income. There's a phone number that you call our coordinator, a real person at Channel One, who goes through those questions and signs people up. And you can, of course, get your box in the, in the food shelf. It has to be in a box and it has to be certain foods, a very regulated federal program. Mobile markets. This is new within the last year at Channel One. This brings choice shopping out into the community. So we go to the Oak Terrace Mobile Home Park once a month, and we also advertise to, there's several lower-income apartment buildings that are around that Oak Terrace neighborhood, and then also Longfellow Elementary. So people can come to the community center there and shop. We have these racks, we also have a big cooler so we can bring frozen and refrigerated food, and people come shop right there. We also take this to High Point Senior Living, and we're going to Hawthorne two times a month. Once they register for this, so we have an iPad, we register them just like they're at the food shelf, that then registers them for Channel One, our, our food shelf. We tell them about our food shelf, and we're also seeing more people come to the food shelf after that. The most efficient, cost-effective thing is for people to get themselves to the food shelf. So when we can tell people about the food shelf and entice them through these mobiles, it's just another win at those events. And we've had these also at Overland Elementary, and we're working with RPS for a, a, a community-wide strategy because we can't get to each school, so we're talking to the, to the district about which are the most important schools for us to bring these to. Kitchen Coalition, formerly Minnesota Central Kitchen. When we talk about partnership, this this all started by Julie Brock, who at the time was the cradle of career, forwarding me an email about a CARES Act program that did prepared meals. And I can remember, I was actually visiting my parents. It was the middle of the pandemic. We had driven our one and three-year-old to the beach, and I'm relaxing on the porch, and I get this message, and I say, no, we can't do prepared meals. We don't, we can't cook. And then I'm like, well, wait, what if there was a caterer? So we talked to the school district. They weren't going to apply. The city of Rochester lent us their grant writer, because we had four days to get this federal RFP in. The county agreed to help, that they would distribute meals. Multiple nonprofits in town agreed. And we did it. We got a caterer, we pushed the meals out, we distributed them with the school district, a huge chunk of them, when the county lent Channel One and the district that drive-through building at Grand Park. And then after that, we said, this is feeding a lot of people. It's popular. How do we continue? Well, then we talked to our friends at Second Harvest Heartland. They're the food bank in the Twin Cities, and they're the second biggest food bank in the country. And they had a program, which is what we're doing now, where restaurants order food from our, donated food from our inventory, and then make it into meals. And we reimburse them just for their cost. And then we redistribute those meals through partners in the community. So this is taking food that would have been thrown away, because it might be like a whole case of chicken that's frozen together. You can't give that to someone to take home. You could, but it wouldn't go very well. So, but restaurants can thaw that out and then make it into food for the community. So we got a grant from Feeding America to figure out how to scale what Heartland was doing to a smaller community. It's a success. You can now see where we're distributing in town, and the program, the program continues. And then now, Feeding America is, has, has picked it up, and food banks all over the country are starting to do it. So it's pretty exciting that a program that was, you know, that we figured out, we, we learned it in Minnesota, figured out how to replicate it in Rochester, is now a program that's taking hold nationwide. And so many partners came together to, to make that happen. And I, I think that probably many of the people we distribute to are also being funded and supported by Olmsted County. Quick update on the backpack program. So we're always learning, and we did a community co-design program funded by Feeding America, using Jess Roberts from the University of Minnesota. And I dropped that name because people are using him all over town. He did the Discovery Walk program, and now Rochester Public Schools is using him as the facilitator as well. And what that meant is we found people who were at the heart of the community, people with lived experience with hunger, and we paid them a professional stipend to share their experience with us. And what we learned through that was while the backpack program was beloved, that's where schools sent children home with backpacks from Channel One or food packets. It really wasn't the preference of people experiencing food insecurity because it didn't feed the whole family, and it was small and snacky. Because to get it, I mean, as somebody who packs a backpack for a kindergartner every day, to get more things, to cram more things in that backpack, you're just not going to be able to have that much food. And there was also an equity issue in that well-meaning, well-meaning people were assuming that some kids needed the backpack. And so imagine you're a parent, and you're, you don't need the backpack kit, and you find that in the backpack. Like, how, how might that make you feel as far as being stigmatized? So again, well-meaning, attention, poor results. And so the district has just welcomed us in. They let us have precious time to meet with their social workers and guidance counselors. They let Channel One train them on how to spot food insecurity and develop some marketing materials. And we've switched to food stability boxes. And so what that means is it's, it's two to three days of food for the entire family. So if mom comes in to the office, you know, for a meeting, talks to a guidance counselor, and also says, and we just don't have enough food at home or for tonight, or if a high school child discloses that, they're something to give them right now. Like, you hear, you have dinner today and tomorrow, but let me talk to you about, do you know how to sign up for SNAP? Do you know about Channel One? So it hooks them into the larger system, and then also gives them, serves an immediate need. Because we don't want a backpack program to serve as a Band-Aid. So instead of talking about SNAP or talking about the more sustainable, sustainable things. And then we're also working on strategic locations to roll out mobile markets to the public school. We're at Hawthorne now, and we're thrilled with that. We've been at Overland, but we're looking at the future. Also want to talk about our, our library friends. We are doing home delivery all because of a partnership with the library during the pandemic. So you'll probably all remember when the library stepped up and ran that amazing COVID-19 information hotline. Well, the librarians agreed to let us train them in how to screen for food insecurity. We had a flow chart of like different resources based on different situations. And then that included the librarians getting into our software and signing people up for home delivery. And then the city helped fund a temporary delivery driver. Well, what we, we were, and we started this because we were afraid when the schools shut down suddenly in November of 20, that there'd be kids at home who couldn't get to those pickup points, and they'd be sitting home hungry. Well, if you can have food from the food bank delivered for free, then nobody's going to be hungry. So what we, what we learned through that is that it, so I'm the biggest fan ever of home delivery of groceries. For, for busy families, I think it's just the best thing ever. I'm probably never going in a grocery store again if I can avoid it. But I was afraid, and we were afraid, that people would use Channel One like the merits use Instacart or Hy-Vee aisles online, and that would not be sustainable. But people don't. They're truly only using it when they're homebound. So that partnership with library, with the library taught us that, one, we can answer the, we have the capacity to answer the phone and take those calls and make those deliveries. So right now, we're using volunteers and staff for the deliveries. We're getting ready to pilot using DoorDash and see if that is or isn't more efficient. But for a homebound senior or a family without transportation, it's huge. And through that partnership, we learned that we are able to do it. And I can second what Karen said about families coming to the library when they need information, because people think that librarians know everything, and they almost do. And librarians also hate it when they can't help people because they're just so darn helpful all the time. And so by training the librarians in food insecurity, they were able to get people to the right resources. So what I'm showing you right now is what, what is, what is the need? So these are our food shelf visits. Duplicated means number of total visits in a month. And then unique means like individual households. And then on the far right, you can see pounds distributed in that month. We saw a 30% increase in shopping trips in 2022 compared to 2021. And that's, that's what the whole state has been experiencing, and the whole country is seeing increases. It's, we never saw numbers like this during the pandemic. We suspect that's because the grocery inflation didn't happen in 2020 and 2021. That started in 2022. It also happened really fast. I was at the Feeding America Conference in April of '22, and nobody was talking about food shortages. Then by June, it was a crisis. So all of this happened really quickly. Thank you so much for that additional funding. That put food on the food shelf and kept this from being a, a much bigger problem than it would have been. We're continuing to see that about 30% increase. We saw the 27% increase in January of '23 compared to '22. And I put on the slide, what happens in April when there's no E-Snap? And we're holding our breath to see what happens. We'll be ready for people. We're always ready. We turned no one away during this time. But that could be, for a lot of families, the county can correct me if I'm wrong, that could be $95 or more per month of that E-Snap ending at a time when groceries are at all-time high prices. So it-
And E-Snap is what?
Um, sorry, that's the SNAP, that's the extra SNAP that people got during the pandemic. Yes, okay. The counties are SNAP experts. So, you know, and it's just really hard to know when the inflationary grocery prices will stop, and it, and if that's going to stop. The good news is, is that the community has been wonderful supporters of Channel One. Most of our money isn't government money. It's individual gifts that people have made. So we're just super grateful to this community, as well as grateful to you and the government funding as well. Questions about the need before I move on?
Ms. Mayor, remind us of the supplemental, the supplemental amount at E-Snap. How much does that represent for families?
For E-Snap? It's going to depend on the families. And Ms. Walsh can help me, please.
I believe it's about $100 a family for an average-sized family. So there, and I think that it ended on March 1st. I believe it ended on March 1st.
Yeah, the last payment was March. People still got paid in March.
Yeah, they got paid on March 1st, but now that's it. So the, so they will have the same amount for March, but as Virginia noted, April, the amount they get on their card will be-
Will be diminished.
About $100.
On the average.
Yeah. And so it's interesting, oh, I think it's interesting, how much policy in other programs impact Channel One. This is also the first school year where you had to actually sign your child up for free lunch. They didn't automatically get free lunch. They did still get free breakfast. So for the past two years, there was universal school lunch because of the pandemic declarations at the federal government level. But we had to actually get kids signed up. And then also, the children who were between 185 and then 200% with those working families, they, they had to pay, and they weren't used to having to, to pay that.
So as the legislature looks at universal free lunch and, and free breakfast, how will that impact your ability to determine what families need additional sources?
We, I will tell you, three years ago, we never thought universal free lunch would happen, like at a policy level. And we are so, as food bankers, myself and the rest of us in the state, we are so excited that it looks like this really could happen. The most efficient way to feed children, money-wise, or really any-wise, is them eating in school. But it's reemb, it's mostly reimbursed with the federal government. There's your money. It's also incredibly effective. I think it's a lunch $3. I should know, but I don't. So it's, it's a low-priced meal. It's mostly reimbursed. The children are there anyways. There's no transportation cost to get anybody anywhere. It would make, it, it makes very little sense for families to shop at Channel One to make a lunch to send their kids with, when you look at like total system cost. So we are just beyond excited. It's also great that Rochester does breakfast after the bell. So what that means is breakfast, breakfast is served not before school, but like once school starts. So you don't have to get the kids there early for them to eat, and that increases participation. So that's a great first practice that I, RPS and the other school, we're also in contact with the other schools in Olmsted County that, that everyone is doing, and it's just tremendous. All right. So this shows you our food sourcing trends. We are, so you can see that donated food decreased sharply in 2021. It's recovered a little bit in 2022. That is because we are working really hard to knock on retailers' doors and make sure that we're increasing that amount of food. So donated food comes from agriculture. It comes from retail rescue, so like Hy-Vee, QuickTrip, you know, Cub, wherever, Target. And then it also comes from major manufacturer donations. And that can come directly to us. So, for example, we have a new relationship with the Aldi Distribution Center in, in Rice County. And we've been benefiting from transportation costs, because we might get a whole semi-truck of tomatoes that they reject, because like the packaging is wonky or something, still perfectly good to eat. It used to be they would send that back to wherever the tomatoes came from. But that's too expensive, because transportation is too expensive. So now they're saying, give it away or throw it away. So we're capitalizing on that. And it's been huge. Sometimes it's so much, we can't always move a, we can't always distribute in our region that much. But if it's too much, we send it up to the Twin Cities, and then they distribute it. So, I don't know. I find, I find it fascinating how the retail rescue and the food rescue works. And we're also looking at models in the Twin Cities. There's food shelves there that are running totally on retail rescue. So totally on food that you're picking up from grocery stores, which is interesting and requires a lot of coordination. So it might mean that you have a food distribution that opens at 11:00 a.m. so that you can rescue all morning, and then just you put it out, and the people come, and you want to move everything that you get that day. So we're looking at different models. We also got some funding last cycle from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. We're doing everything we can to increase that. The government commodities tanking was really bad timing, and those tanks are decreased because the, we had additional TFAP during the trade war with China. Remember, remember that a couple of years ago? So when our farmers couldn't export to China, the government subsidized them, then we got the food. Well, that ended last year, so that extra TFAP ended. But the Biden administration did increase it, but it didn't increase quickly, because the cost of food is so high, that the way that process used to work is the government said, we'll pay X dollars for tuna. And then the producers would bid. Well, the producers were saying, that bid is too low, we won't even put a bid in. So whole loads of TFAP were getting canceled and not arriving because nobody would even bid. So now the process is, now the process is, the government won't set a low bid, but let's go with the best bid. So it's, Feeding America tells me that any minute, we should see that increase. So we won't believe it till we see it on our dock. But we're super, we are, we have some hope there that that, that government commodity food will increase. Questions about that? Okay. Well, that really gets me to, you know, what I, what I wanted to, to share with you all about our services in Olmsted County. I did send you an invite for March 16th at 4:00 p.m. if people are available to tour. I'll send you all an email reminding you of that. Would love to have you out to really see what we're doing, what we're, what we're up to. And I'm always happy to schedule with you individually as well. Questions?
Yeah.
That is a board head.
Chair.
Yes.
One of the things that, in Another Life, we did a lot of work with Second Harvest in the Twin Cities, and we would go out and actually box up food for people. So it was more than just a, a look, see, visit. Is there any opportunity for that?
Yes, if, if, if you, if y'all want to volunteer as a group, we would love to have you. We also do food repack at Channel One. Now, smaller than what we're doing. We're, we're a tenth of their size. But we do repack at Channel One as well, and we'd love to have you. We also always need volunteers in the food shelf. And you're a small enough group that you could all take a, a shift in our food shelf volunteering. And that would also put you like right in the mix with the community, because you'd be, you know, putting things on shelves while the community is shopping. So if you're interested in that, please let me know. We would absolutely love to arrange it.
Thank you.
And, you know, you were on the committee that approved the bonding for Second Harvest Heartland. And I've got to say, it's, you know, we told you it would be a game changer for the state, and it truly has been, as far, as far as efficiency goes. Like, we, we do, we were, we do all, almost all of our food comes through there now, because they're ordering en masse for the whole state, plus part of Wisconsin and North Dakota, to get those absolute best prices. Not to mention that the Produce Mixing Center there, which is where they order produce from everywhere, mix the loads, so you get a variety. That was the first, and I think the, the best, uh, produce co-op in the country. And so it's allowed that to flourish as well. So it truly has been a game changer for the whole state.
Good to hear that. Thank you.
I'm probably way over my time. I could talk all day. You'll have to kick me out.
So last year, I can't remember what our appropriation was. And then in October, we added another $90,000, I believe.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the past several years, I think we've been at $50,000 as a standard amount that has been appropriated. And then, as Commissioner Wright noted, yes, it was an additional $90,000 from ARPA for, that we appropriated. I think it was in August.
Right. So, yeah. And then I know that it's really hard sometimes to imagine kids being hungry. But my own personal experience is, is that my wife was a first-grade teacher, and surprising how many kids would ask for food. So part of our grocery bill was getting those foods for breakfast for those kids. So it's really great that the government is going to get involved in providing breakfasts and lunches. The kid, they can't learn without food, so. Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, please send us that invitation so that they can put it on their calendars if they wish. Appreciate that. So, you know, it's like two minutes to noon, so- So, you know, it's like two minutes to noon, so I don't know if ready's on.
No, well, they're not here and Mr. Chair, we'll, we'll confirm them for a later date.
All right. So at this time then, what I'd do is I'd like to entertain a motion for our two volunteer applicants, Sager Dugani and Stacy Kirkpatrick, who are applying for the Human Services Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. All right, they are approved, so thank you for contacting them. And then we will go to board and committee reports. We'll start on my left this time. Commissioner Sanjum, do you have a board or committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. The human service, pardon me, the Health Services Advisory Committee meeting of last week, it, the, the topic was generally youth smoking and, and that organization's going to come to, back to that board and ultimately I suspect to this, to this chamber with a recommendation relative to some technical fixes on the tobacco ordinance and, and another one. And these are technical fixes which just relate to existing state law, which apparently our regulations or ordinances need to be updated too. And in addition to that, with a, a, a recommendation that we ban flavored cigarettes or tobacco, as the case might be, in Homestead County. So that's on the horizon there. I would also note, last week, although not a committee, I, I did for just personal learning, I guess, attend the, the retreat of the Rochester Executive City Council and I, I found that interesting. They, they went through their, if you will, their, their plan and, and updated, had a lot of good discussion. I thought there was a lot of merit to that and it reminded me just how much we're one community and, and we just need to kind of, I think, sink in a little bit better with the, with the, our city council, brothers and sisters. And then I, maybe somebody else is going to mention this, but our, our good mentor over there, Lisa Helmster-Morris, if I have that right, probably don't, at least a middle name, but Lisa, congratulations on your honorary chairmanship with the back little Luda Fest and, and all your work in peacemaking. I mean, that's really, that's just stellar and thank you so much for that. Well deserved. Well, I'm, I'm new at knowing you, but I suspect it's very well deserved.
All right, thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner Padova Smith.
Nothing to report this week.
All right. Commissioner Kiskade.
You may have noticed in the committee report, in Jennifer Burcom's report this week, that we have, legislative committee had met last week and recommended some changes in the format of that report so that we can call attention, call your attention to groups that have asked us for letters of support or for testimony in support of things that were not part of our platform. It's the legislative committee's intention to try and keep everybody informed of what those requests are, to use our current process that if the three committee members feel we should go ahead, we'll probably take action, but it gives you an opportunity to see what the requests have been and to weigh in if you have concerns or questions or, or think that we should have had a broader discussion before we, before we took action. When the legislature starts meeting, there's not often a lot of time to respond. You get a request, I got a request yesterday to testify on Thursday morning and so we don't have a lot of time to confer with everyone, but I think that format should help us all track the kinds of requests we're getting from what kinds of groups and what actions we've been taking as representing the legislative committee, representing the, the full board. So I wanted to call out, call that to your attention. A couple of us attended the, the chambers legislative, not the legislative, the government forums yesterday. The chair and I usually go and the sheriff and Mark Gostrom. It's an opportunity for the higher education institutions, the city, the county, the school districts and certain nonprofits to kind of report in as a, as a conversation. One of my big takeaways was that the city reported that they have nine different projects that they have, are applying, submitting applications for community-directed projects for legislators or for congressmen, in other words earmarks from Congress. And I verified this morning in admin committee that we have three projects that we are also going to be submitting, doing the forms of requesting earmarks or legislative priorities on our, our three credible bonding projects. You may or may not know that the House so far has included our, in the, in the Senate, if the bonding bill goes forward, the $10 million for the materials recovery facility is in both bonding bills if that bill passes, which is going to be an open question. Our to, our total request for that was 16.25 million. We didn't get the full amount, but there is 10 in that. And now they're starting to have hearings on the next round of, of bonding bill, another bonding bill that they're putting together. The one other thing I wanted to call out legislatively in the Human Services Committee, I asked if staff could look at the proposal that has just been submitted by the administration to create, to divide up the Department of Human Services into three separate entities. One that does direct service and care, one that focuses on children and family and then sort of everything else, adult services and everything else that the Department of Human Services currently has. I, I also noted that the new children and families unit would bring in early learning education and certain juvenile justice programs. I think this is something that counties need to pay close attention to because it, we, it really will have a big impact on how we interface with state agencies. And this was tried 30 years ago, didn't work. There's a new renewed effort to make it happen this time and I, I just would call out that something we probably need to pay close attention to and, and be engaged in commenting on. I think that's it for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, time.
Couple short reports. Our most recent ROCOG meeting, we voted to settle letter of support for, for, to seek federal funding for Conrath Road 44 overpass. We'll see what happens there. We also had a study on traffic. It was interesting, in 2020, our traffic miles were down 15%, but our fatal crashes went up 20%, which was two opposite curves, but you know, if you remember, there was a rash of people that were acting radically, erratically when COVID came and that showed up in the numbers. And then at our most recent Rochester, Homestead Youth Commission meeting, we had approximately 25 youth there, so that, that, that group is really growing well and doing well. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Mueller.
I have no report.
All right. Commissioner Rossmann.
I have nothing to report today, Mr. Chair.
All right. I would like to add my congratulations to Lisa. I think it's just another example of the outstanding staff that we have at Olmsted County and that we continually to get our staff recognized for outstanding services. So thank you very much. She's blushing back there, but well deserved. All right. Thank you very much. If I, no other actions, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, motion and second. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Mr. Chair, are we meeting, we can leave our materials because we're meeting back in here with the HRA at 1:00, right? Is that correct? Are we meeting in this room?
We have another-
HRA, HRA.
And we have a, we have a little, we have a meeting. You and I have a little-
Yeah, HRA MN is going to be in one.
HRA is going to be in one.
In one.
Are we?